So we're going to call this meeting to order. If you could all rise and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to remind everybody that this is a work session of the school board. So while no official business will be conducted this evening, this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion and collect information, but it will be conducted as a normal board meeting. We are going to start with the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. Motion to approve. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Now we'll move on to comments from the audience. Hearing none, we will move on to our first item of business. Dr. Suits is going to review our facility use policies.
So the policy that we currently have in place regarding facility usage actually was last revised back in 1992. So it has been a while since we've looked at it. It is, it is limiting in the fact that it kind of ranks in order of how facilities can be used first. With having those that are directly involved with the education of students. And then it goes on into school community groups, which would be like the PTO. And then as well into nonprofit before it gets down to the last category, which would be the for-profit organizations. So that's really what we're looking as we move forward into this year to see if we want to change anything with policy, revise the policy in any way. And I think that this comes at a good time as we're going into our next strategic planning cycle that we'll be able to get community input as we're doing today to kind of see what possibilities might be out there if we choose to go that route. And then continue to gather that information as we go through this year. And then the board can decide what direction it really wants to go with in terms of the policy as they are written right now. Any questions on any of that?
All right, we'll move on to our first presentation. It's Mr. Rob Wright. He's going to give us some information on drivers' education.
Hello, thanks for your time. My name's Rob Wright. So I come up with right turn driver education. So this is starting my 24th year at Edwardsburg. Twenty-two years of teaching drivers' education in Cassopolis and the director and instructor. And I usually, I can get about 16 Edwardsburg students per year to take over with me to teach over there. And right now we have a two-year waiting list with people calling all the time about it. Michigan switched to a graduated drivers, like drivers licensing system about 10 years ago. So instead of getting your license, full license at 16, it's their steps. And anytime if you stumble in one of those steps, you go backwards. So it's not like when most of us were 16 and we got our full license. This one's a lot safer. So at 14 years, eight months, you can enroll in segment one. It takes about 22 class hours and six hours of driving in the car. After that, you have to get 30 hours with your parents and 10 at night. And then that will, after you do that, you have six months, you can take segment two, which is the second part of this. You have to take a test. There's no driving or anything like that. After that, they have to do 50 hours with their parents before they can take a third, this is a lot of stuff, a third-party test to get their license. So there's a lot of requirements now and they have to get the whole thing done by their 18th birthday. If they think, well, I'm not going to take driver's ed, I'm just going to wait till I'm 18, they still have to take the third-party test and they cannot pass it. Most of them cannot pass it. Driver's ed really helps them out. And also their car insurance will be more expensive till they're about 26 years old if they don't take driver's ed. So segment one session is 22 hours. That would only be 11 days in my classroom, two hours each day. Three days out in the parking lot where we do parallel parking and just get a sense if they can drive or not. Segment two, which would be six months after, would be three days in a classroom and it's just two hours. There's no driving or anything like that. So what am I asking for? I was asking for use of my classroom. Use of my classroom to teach drivers' education to the Edwardsburg students and use of the parking lot on those days. So why do we need this? All students need driver education. Families need a local option. Currently, I am the only, I'm only able to take 16 students per year. And each class we have here has about 200 students and it leaves a huge gap. Creates a safe driving environment for our community. There's huge need right now, long waiting list. And Edwardsburg is known for choices and opportunities. This would just be another one added to the list. And so I can take your questions if you have any right now, anything like that.
I have a question. So, so what would you do then as far as your obligations to CAS then if you were to teach us in Edwardsburg? I mean, how would you like divide your time up or?
I, I would just teach here. I would not close the program down. I'm the director and the instructor, I'm the only instructor there. My dad and I taught it together for about 10 years. He taught it for 40 years there and he retired and I took the program over. Everything's switched. I don't know if you guys remember this. The state of Michigan quit paying for drivers' education and so it took it out of the schools. Well, I was able to keep it going there. And so we're still, it's still a public school there, one of the only ones. So what, what I'm asking for is not for you guys to take over liability or anything like that, just to let me use a classroom. There's a lot of startup costs to this, you know, car and insurance and assertive bonds and things like that. And what I'm asking for is if I can use my classroom in the parking lot, that will help defray some of the costs to the students to take driver's ed.
Thank you.
I'm in the car with the kids. They do six hours and then they have six hours of observation. So I just take two students with me on a drive. And so, you know, in the summer I'm driving a lot and this would be after school. You know, 3:05 to 5:05 and then drive after that and I would probably drive on the weekends. So. Is there any other questions you guys would have for me? Thank you for your time. I think there's a lot of need. I get calls and emails daily from parents asking, can I get? And I feel so bad that I have a two-year waiting list. What, we were able to keep up. I was able to have 16 kids come with me from Edwardsburg and then COVID hit. And when COVID hit, it bottlenecked everything. And so I have students that are almost, almost going to be 18 that need driver's ed. And then that throws back all the kids that have, they're 14 years and eight months, which is usually eighth grade to ninth grade. I teach eighth grade. So it's about that time when they need driver's ed to start, so.
How's the liability insurance handle?
So I would hold that off. So I have to get assertive bond and I have to get a liability, liability and auto insurance. So the name, you know, wouldn't be Edwardsburg schools. I would just be using the facilities. And I was thinking like, well, you know, if anybody else, you know, wants to come in and start a drivers ed business, what do you say? And I'd say, well, I guess be a 20-year veteran of the school. And then maybe we'll, I think that would be a good threshold right there. But yeah, there's a, I would hold the liability and the insurance and everything for it. So, and I would provide it if needed. I would have the car. If we wanted to get into other options like Cassopolis does, I would lease a car through the school and, you know, maybe one of the vans, lease a car like that. And I would pay the miles and the gas and everything that goes with it. And so there's that option as well. But if you guys just want a clean thing like that, I would just use the classroom in the parking lot. I know Mr. Avon used the parking lot for years. There was no problem. And I don't mean the full parking lot. I mean, over by the pine trees a little bit so they can do their parallel parking and, and things like that.
Another discussion that was brought up in the policy was students having a gap between the end of the school day and the start of your class.
That's a great question.
Aren't supposed to be unattended, so.
Sure. Um, I, I am in my classroom at that time and we would not start drivers ed at that. Like I've been coaching the whole time I've been teaching. So I, I know all about, you know, 305 and stuff. So they could come into my classroom and use it as a study hall and get ready for class. In the days that we have staff meetings, we wouldn't have class. I mean, I've been, I've been coaching, so I know, I know how, how to do that. So we wouldn't do that. But, so the kids, if they're going to take driver's ed, they could come to my classroom set and have a study hall for, till 3:05. And then we would start class at 3:05. And it's two hours. It's a two-hour class mandated by the state. Oh, I have to be certified, recertified every two years. FBI background. I said I teach, but they go, no, no, you get, so I have to FBI background every two years. I have to recertify. So yeah, it's, there's a cost to it every single year. Every two years I have to certify for it.
If you were doing it here, how many students would you service here?
So it depends how many classes we could fit in. I can't, like if, if you were to give me your permission, I have to go through the state and start trying to get this approved. That, I would need your approval first and then I would have to get the whole class approved. Could take like three or four months for the state to go through all, all the things and make sure everything's good. After that, I could do maybe 32 kids a session and then four, four, three to four, five sessions a year. Just depends, like the first year is going to be trying to, you know, work out all the kinks and everything, but I've been doing this for a long time. It's just, if I start up a new thing, how are we going to work through the time? I, there, there is one other teacher that does driver's ed and he usually helps me drive. He's an Edwardsburg employee as well. So there could be two of us driving the students to try to get it through a little faster. If it's just me, if it's just me driving the kids, it's going to take, it's going to take a couple of months per class. If it's me and another person, I can get, I can get through one and probably about a month and a half. The driving takes a long time. The classrooms, I mean, it's only 11 days in the classroom, but for me after school, after that, to go out and drive four hours a night, it gets pretty long. So I try not to do that. Try not to do that.
Think one of the other things, Rob, that, that was a concern like earlier on when this first came up was really the liability to the school, even though you really carry the insurance and everything. If something did happen, have you had any of that so far in all of your years of experience?
What did I say? 22 years of driver's ed and one time we were driving down Pine Lake Street and a rock fell out of the woods and hit our windshield. It's the only thing that's happened in 22 years. I don't know what was going on. Somebody was throwing rocks, but no, yeah. No, because the, their fleet insurance, like the insurance you guys carry on the vans, that's what it falls under. And so there was, there's been nothing. No.
I think that the firm that represents the school would have to really dive in to understand, totally agree that you have the liability and, but that's obviously, we have to make sure that we're.
Oh, yeah.
Covering the school system. I mean, obviously we, you know, we all say, yes, it's important. We're all, you know, we've all parents and, but yet, again, we have to make sure that the law firm that represents the school agrees with what.
Oh, I agree. I know that a few schools down the road open up their facilities to let us do it. And so it's doable. And the one, the one I've been working at, the school holds everything on it. So this one would be just like the ones down the road that the company holds the liability for it.
For two years waiting lists, there's obviously a need for it, right?
I got an email right before I walked in, if they could fit a student in, and scratching my head, I just don't know. 16 students a year, how, how we've been doing it and it's just not enough. Of, and then I take 16 from CAS because I was doing that CAS. So if I did it, if I did here, it would just be Edwardsburg students.
I'm just counting. I'm like 14 months, 14 years and eight months. I'm like, that's just right around the corner. It's stressing me out. They really should have started that soon.
Sixteenth birthday when the insurance goes up. It doesn't go up in driver's ed, your insurance doesn't go up. It's when insurance is 16, so. Is there anything else I could answer? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to hear from Mrs. Amber Grundy. She's going to talk about before and after school care programs.
There we go. Perfect. Great. Hi, my name is Amber Grundy. I have three students right now in the district and one more that will be coming next year. He's preschooler still. And right now my oldest is a freshman or will be a freshman this fall. And then I also have a upcoming seventh grader, an upcoming first grader and a four-year-old. So we've been here since my oldest Avery was in kindergarten. And we are, so I represent Campfire. Campfire, just as a little bit of background, is a national nonprofit youth organization. There are approximately 50 councils across the country right now. And most of the councils run outside of school time programs like after school and before school. They run environmental education programs. So spring and fall, we do a lot of outdoor ed programs and summer camps. We're right, we're in our last week of summer camp right now. We'll have had 1,198 campers over the course of this summer by the time we finish on, on Saturday. And then we do teen leadership programs, like our counselor and training program. And our local council here was founded in 1918, so we celebrated our 100th anniversary a couple of years ago. And we currently run three programs. We have our summer camp program, which I was just saying is up in Van Dalia, Michigan. And we do day and overnight programs there all summer long. And then we have two after-school programs, one, actually one after-school and one that is before and after-school. So we have the program at Good Shepherd Montessori in South Bend and we run there from the end of the school day till 5:30 each day. And at, at Cassopolis, at Sam Adams Elementary, we do an hour and a half before school each day and from the end of the school day till six o'clock each afternoon. And we run on all of the, all of the regular school days throughout the year. And then we also do all-day programs on days when there are scheduled days off of school, like teacher conference days, in-service days and things like that. So we provide from, on the all-day programs, it's from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM that the parents can send their kids on days when they know that the kids don't have school. We design all of our curriculum using what our national organization calls Thriveology. It's through a partnership with the Thrive Foundation for Youth out of Ann Arbor. And they have identified four facets to this. So we help kids identify their sparks. These are the things that they're passionate and excited about. And we help them explore those and come up with things that maybe they never realized was a spark for them before. We help them adopt a growth mindset. So as opposed to a fixed mindset where they say, oh, I'm just not good at math or I don't, I'm not good at baseball. We help them say, well, maybe you're not yet, but if we work hard at it, we can get better and practice that growth mindset. We work with goal management skills. So we help kids design plans towards like, my goal is to do this by the end of the school year. Well, what are the realistic steps to get there? So how can we help them work their way towards that? And if you get off track, how do you get back on track so that you're achieving that goal by the end of your, your time? And then every day we provide opportunities to reflect on the things that we've done. It's really important for kids to kind of look at what they've done and say, what went well? What didn't go so well? What could I have done differently? And reflect on those experiences. And the Thrive Foundation identifies a series of indicators of thriving. In the little booklet, there's actually a wheel, but it's really hard to see because it's tiny, but there's a little wheel that shows the indicators of thriving. And these include things like social skills, life skills, conflict resolution, confidence, purpose, growth mindset, connection to nature. And with our K through five programs, we typically focus mostly on the social skills, the growth mindset and the conflict resolution. Those are kind of the most age appropriate for K through five students. So why do we need this program? There are roughly 1,200 students in K through five in the district and relatively limited options for before and after school care. I'm aware of Stars Academy in Granger buses kids before and after school. And there's a few home childcare programs that people can arrange for their kids to go to, but it's pretty limited for a school that has 1,200 K through five students. I've talked to lots of parents over the years as my, my kids have come up through the grades. And there's so many people who are like, what do I do with my kid? You know, how do I pick them up at 3:45 if I work till five? For me, right, the last four years and for the foreseeable future because of the age spread of my kids, there's an hour in the morning that I sit in the car in the parking lot and another hour and a half in the afternoon that I sit in the car in the parking lot every single day. So my, my, last year, my kindergartner was always the first one to arrive in the morning because we would drop our middle schoolers off and go up the hill and sit in the car and wait. And that's really challenging. You know, you don't get into work until late and then you got to leave again at two o'clock to get here to pick up the middle schoolers or have them walk to the library or, which I'm sure the librarians are not super thrilled to have a whole library full of noisy middle schoolers. And it's difficult to be here for your elementary students at 3:45 and even more difficult to be here at 2:22 for the middle school. So we would provide a safe and enriching option for parents who don't want their kids to go home alone after school or don't have the option of sending them home on a bus. And, or who are unable to get them at the time that they need to pick up and have to make other arrangements. Our program that I'm proposing would be that we could do the morning from seven or 7:15 until when the elementary kids are allowed to get out of their cars and go onto the playground. And that we would go daily from the end of the school day until six o'clock. Every day at our programs, we provide a snack. We do homework help. We do educational activities each afternoon. And we try to integrate science, math, arts, health, physical activity, technology type stuff. Each day has a theme and we do six-week blocks. So for instance, at the beginning of the school year, we always do a six-week block on connection. And Mondays are a, what we call a traditional campfire activity that involves connecting with your peers and learning about each other. Tuesdays are STEM activities, so science and technology type stuff. Wednesdays, we do seasonal art projects. Thursdays, they work on a project that the group decides on and they work on it over the course of the six weeks. So it's project-based learning. And then Fridays, we try to do outdoor ed stuff as long as the weather allows. Our morning programs are a little less structured. Mostly we do supervised activities in the gym or in a classroom. And this is mainly because parents drop off at all different times in the morning. So we might have five kids at the beginning at seven o'clock and we might have 30 by the time it's time to release them. And it's really hard to create a structured activity when they're just coming in at all different times. And if a middle school program for that hour between the end of the middle school day until the elementary day. until the elementary day is preferred or desired by parents, we would be happy to do that as well. It would probably be more like the morning program. We could do homework help and maybe some supervised time like in the gym or doing activities like that. I think the middle schoolers wouldn't care so much for structuring a program with activities and things for them to do and artwork and stuff. And they could stay through the, the hours from the elementary to the end of the day too, depending on when their parents need to pick them up. Our programs are designed to be incredibly flexible for the parents. So we give them until Friday each week to tell us what next week's schedule is going to look like. So if they're normally a five-day kid and they say, next week I don't need Thursday, then I only charge them for four days for the next week. So we try to be as, as flexible as possible. We just give them till Friday afternoon to let me know what next week's schedule looks like so we can make sure we have supplies and staff for that. We obtain and we apply for and obtain our own licensing through the state of Michigan. We're currently already licensed in Casopolis. And I've talked with our licensing consultant and she said that adding a second site is really easy because she already has all our paperwork. She would just come out, have to come out and do a site visit, see the space that we would be allowed to use and approve it to add a second site to the license. We provide all of the staffing, the supplies. We provide a certificate of insurance that lists the district as an additional insured on our policy. So to provide that, that insurance question. We handle all of the registration, the schedules, the billing, the hiring and training of the staff, supervising the staff. And so primarily what we need is a space to hold the program. And our capacity would be based on, entirely based on what space is provided, how much space we have. So at Casopolis, we have access to two classrooms, the gym and the playground. And the two classrooms are our primary space that we use. So our license capacity is based on the square footage of those classrooms as defined by licensing rules for how many students we can serve. So right now we're licensed for 42 kids there. She gave us 21 kids per classroom. So our morning program there tends to be more full than our afternoon program. But their district is also like a quarter of the size of this district. So I would imagine that we would have more demand for it here. So that's, that's what I've got. I'd be happy to answer questions.
I have one question for you, Amber, I'm sorry.
Of course.
As far as the fees that you have at Sam Adams and otherwise, are there, are there opportunities for grants for free or reduced for students that can't really afford?
So we are approved through the state of Michigan for the Michigan Bridges childcare funding. And so if parents are eligible for that, they just have to fill out a form and then we submit it to the state and then there's reimbursement.
Great, thank you.
Does Sam Adams charge you?
No.
To pay you facilities?
Nope, they just provide us the space and we, we, from there on, we take over. And I forgot to introduce, this is Carmen. She's our school year programs director. So she oversees the current after-school programs that we run and, and would also oversee one here if it was approved.
So Rob's had a rock chip. Have you had any bad?
So I have been the direct, well, I started as the director at our camp in 2006. And I've been the CEO for the organization since 2011 and we have never had any major. Yes, knock on wood, please. Yes, we, and we serve about 1,200 kids a year at our, at our camp and roughly 150 kids through the two after-school programs that we have right now.
How much space do you think you'd need here?
Whatever we could get would determine how many students we could accept. I don't, I, I believe there's a demand for it. I believe there's probably a lot of families that would like to take advantage of it. I'd be happy to start with a pilot program with one or two spaces and, and see where it goes from there. We have shared classroom space with teachers in the past and just arranged, like we have a corner where we put a box with all our supplies and keep it out of their way and clean up after ourselves in the afternoon. So if there wasn't an empty room for us, we have shared space with teachers in the past. And we just try to be really good about cleaning up and making sure we put their classroom back exactly the way it was when we found it.
Have you had any trouble staffing for any of the spots?
Sometimes. The last couple of years have been a little challenging. But we, we also have fi- four or five of us, right now four and usually five year-round staff. And we fill in, you know, when someone calls in sick, one of us jumps in and, and is at the program. So we try, we, the state of Michigan says we have to have an 18 to one ratio of adults to kids. We try to make it, in our classroom at Sam Adams, for instance, we're allowed to have 21 kids in each classroom and we always have two adults in each group. So we're more like 11 to one rather than the 18 to one that the state requires.
Are there any other questions?
So I brought business cards. I don't know if it would be helpful for me to just give one in case any of you have questions you want to reach out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I have your number.
I know.
Our next presentation will be from Mr. Brandon Bertsfield. He's going to talk about martial arts programs.
Well, I forgot to say, we are a nonprofit.
Good afternoon. So my name is Brandon Bertsfield. I am a six, six-degree black belt and I own Bertsfield's Black Belt Academy here in Edversburg at the newly renovated Gateway, Gateway Plaza by Flat Rock Girl. For, for years I've been in the PHM system, mainly the Granger Schools, Mary Frank, North Point, Horizon and what's the other one? Prairie Vista, I didn't say that. But we, what I do is I offer for free, I volunteer my time for PTO events. We do after-school programs, which can be used as a fundraiser for the schools. They charge a fee for the students to attend. And what we do, first off, I feel like there could be a misconception what martial arts really is. We don't teach fighting or violence. We use it as, as a tool to build each student with confidence. Or for instance, we could say, give us your students who need more focus or who, who is a leader, but maybe lead in the wrong way. And we take those certain groups or individuals and work with them to help them reach their goals in that aspect. But I'm available for all types of things, volunteer, like I said. Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm drawing blanks here. No, so I do after-school programs. We volunteer for field days. I've done like gym classes for a week. I'm pretty much open to any ideas that would help the school out. And again, I do it of no charge. In return, I just would pass out flyers or maybe invite the, the core groups that I work with to like a pizza party or graduation party. Generally at North Point, I might get 40, 50 students after school once or twice a week for about a month. And then we invite them in with their parents to do a workout as a graduation ceremony and kind of show what, you know, to their parents what they've learned in the class. And then, you know, kind of present them an offer to become a student. But as far as I'm hitting things out in the school, I wouldn't be doing anything like that. Just, just to the students I was working with. Maybe in the future we'd be open to doing summer camps and things like that. But I think for now, I'm the only instructor. If I didn't mention that, I've been teaching since 1996. And it's recertified every couple of years, so we're on top of our training. And yeah, and that's, that's the proposed idea. Does anybody have any questions?
So you wouldn't actually be looking for space? Brandon, you actually would be looking to participate in existing events that we have where it might make sense?
Yeah, or, or maybe like an after-school program where I would just come in to the gym or something like that. And then I would be gone, you know, it's, I wouldn't be doing anything like weekly there, just on occasions when the programs were set up.
What type of martial arts programs?
Taekwondo. So we do, I've, I've, teach ages three through adult classes. Yeah, I was in Granger from 1999 to about 2019, I would say. And then moved over to Edversburg and then we relocated down here just a year or two ago. Yeah.
So you say you have been in Penn doing it?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And so with that, was that a class or was that just like on occasions? I'm a little bit unclear.
Okay, no, understood. So yeah, Prairie Vista is, I think they call Prairie Vista University. And the kids can pick a different course to take, like they have jump roping or like a dance class. One group, they build like monster trucks, like RC cars and they can choose to drive it around, have like a big monster truck run it over. But it's, it's really a cool thing for the school and I've always participated in the martial arts part of that. And usually I'm about the biggest there is. Like I said, we should get, I'd say a minimum of about 30, 35 kids each time. Usually it's about an hour, maybe hour and 15 minutes. We can provide them a snack or whatnot in between. And yeah, it's about twice a year and I've always did the field days with them too. Been working on getting like a teacher self-defense setup just so teachers can better understand how to defend themselves if something was to occur like that. And yeah, like we just donate our time as much as we can.
From a liability standpoint, how does that work?
Liability, well, we have our own liability and injury insurance. Having the academy that's required that I have that and it transfers to wherever I go. I mean, if I'm teaching the kids martial arts in the, in the gym or whatnot, it's nothing too detailed. It's more or less fun and trying to build their character up, you know? Like I'll focus one week on confidence and the week on their self-control, more behavioral issues or, or just teaching them how to be a better leader so they, you know, do better in another classroom.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Do you have any other reports stuck or seats?
Not for this meeting.
Okay, well then, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Who to adjourn?
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion?
I didn't, I didn't realize what was going on. I'm sorry, I'm like, okay, we're adjourning? Like I didn't, I, I missed, I mean, I didn't realize we were kind of done, so sorry. Sorry about that. It just caught me off guard, okay.
Are you good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Favor of adjournment. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. I hope you will all join us over at the interview for our community meeting.